We did do an internal estimate and within the next couple of days we should have a third-party estimate in hand that I can submit.
Just to the board, I've been trying to do this material and the board is, we're on my big break, I don't know where, and I'm thinking, trying to make it as clear as possible, and there's a lot of information out there. I understand this is a first of its kind project. We get a lot of information from the residents. We don't know where it's coming from, we don't know the credentials of the people that you're looking at, where you're looking at. I would ask whether or not, I even told somebody we can get peer review on it, some experts could give us an analysis of what they were doing, what's been provided from the general public and where it was agreeing, which you told us. I don't know if it's true, I just, I think, given the nature of this project and the fact of listening, I think it behooves everybody to get some clarity from somebody other than yourselves and perhaps other than the neighbors, to give us a very important answer to the sensitive areas that they're dealing with.
So we are giving a peer review with conservation commission. We're covering a lot of the same material that we're discussing here. I'm not entirely sure of that scope, it's just come together in the last couple of days. I think there are, you know, I would note that dual-use is a new application, but solar panels themselves and a lot of the concerns coming from the Butters, I think are generally focused on the solar panels themselves, not necessarily solar panels and dual-use aspect. And there is quite a bit of literature provided by the study regarding, you know, health and safety issues surrounding solar panels. And there's actually one other report that does a really good job of summarizing this all that Bill submitted to follow there tonight. He just came across this one, that this was commissioned by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and Massachusetts Great Energy Center. It just is, it's a questions and answers document specifically for ground on solar photovoltaic systems and those other things. A lot of the things have been brought up such as hazardous materials and device and commissioning, ambient temperature, heat on and effect, electromagnetic fields, property values, historic preservation, noise, water impacts, wear, and the nature of species. So I think, you know, this is a very helpful document that goes over a lot of, like most of not, it got all of the concerns we brought up, so.
Is that what I can keep providing?
No, it's not, unfortunately. I will shoot this off, Stacy just wanted my attention to see who just came across it. And so I will.
Just to note, I understand the conservation, this will be a review, but they were very specific in saying their review is very limited because things that impact the wetlands and the flotsam that they're focused on, they will not include any noise or E M S and some of the other concerns of the Butters. And that's why, I think, if there is somebody out there that can give us some clarity on those issues, I would just suggest to the board that we consider.
I have just two questions. The Cranberry Bogs on the south end of Mulberry Meadow, currently there are no solar panels on those bogs. Will it eventually be an expansion?
Well, we tested later, we're the last meeting, we're not planning to expand without any additional solar, Cranberry Bogs.
The, I don't need to be crass with the second question I'm about to ask, but most of the bogs that affect Bay Road at the moment at 5, 4, 3, 5, and 12, you're talking 100 feet from the area to the solar panels. Would you consider, I'll say bluntly, eliminating if not pushing back to 100 yards if further from Bay Road?
So it's 200 feet to Bay Road?
It was 100 yards.
Right, no, I understand, I just wanted to clarify, 100 feet to the copper line to Bay Road.
As you mentioned before, you said that the change was 8.9 megahertz?
Megawatts.
Megawatts to 9.8, so you eliminated one ninth of the overall. So I'm asking, it's a likability, possibility of pushing it back further from Bay Road?
I think that's going to be very difficult for us. You know, there are certain fixed costs that we need to overcome for this project. And just to, you know, double the setback in response to your request, at the last hearing, we lost a significant portion of the array and some of the economic liabilities. And I don't know if that will be possible.
If you also added dogs in between them, correct?
Right, and even good that we still had this.
And that process, most of that was. Good points.
Cranberry Bogs, sorry.
I guess Frank's point, again, just out of curiosity, the bogs alone, Mulberry Meadow and work, they're not being utilized. Could you explain, provide that they're not being utilized versus the ones that you are as they approach Bay Road? And I also have a question too. I'll get to the other question concerning the Bay Road.
Sure, so we're avoiding these bogs for a couple of reasons. One is that there are sections within all of these bogs that are 70 feet or lower, which puts them into the wetlands protection area or competition portion of Norton. And there are performance required requirements, request that we minimize any impacts to the wetlands protection area. Second reason is that this is a flow-through portion of the bogs. And unlike up here where everything is boxed in essentially by man-made dikes, down here there is no manmade, you know, of the bogs, it's a natural free-floating bog. And so for the Conservation Commission, we also avoided using these with the thinking that this would be more valuable, but speaking from the Conservation Commission perspective.
And if you could explain the slight change in the screening along Bay Road that apparently is shown at the border and, but then it jumps up to what happens afterwards?
So, yeah, it'll end up looking basically like it is now except for somewhere like about here.
And then it comes out.
A lot of Bay Road and run down into this screening.
And the reason, the original line, the northern end stays, I assume that's bringing the property over and I know this because there's a lot of sales, so I assume that is what.
Yeah, I'm just going to go back to Frank's point really quick, I mean, it's just the visual for me. How many, to create that 100-foot buffer, how many panels did you have to remove from that area? Do you have a roundabout?
Good question, I don't have that exact number. I'd be happy to follow up with that.
Okay, I'm just, again, visually for me, I mean, it does look like a, you pushed it back by 50 feet on one, two, three, four bogs here, but adding a whole bog on the side, it just looks like you added more than you removed. Yeah, I just want to make the.
Yeah, I'm happy to get back to the specific numbers.
Other questions from the floors and the cameras? From the audience? I'm sorry, no? I'm not sure who was first, but I saw you in the five shirt.
No. Oh, you can go front here.
Okay. Do you remember?
Marion Johnson.
Name for that.
Marion Johnson to away Bay Road. I actually have a lot to say. First of all, as far as the sounds, there's already the panels by Fairleigh Lane, and I took a walk back there today, and I'm a solid 150 feet or so behind. You want to talk about decibels and measure it in the sound of dishwashers, but what, from what I understand, you really want to talk about measuring it in hertz. It's a different sound, and it sounds like this.
You can actually hear that from Bay Road too.
And you can hear this from my house, which is to away Bay Road. Okay, that's going to go from sunup to sundown.
This is, this sound was emanating at your house?
Yes, it is. That's the first point, okay? You said you talked to Butters. I'm one of the closest of Butters. I have never met you. You have not come to my house. You have not discussed any kind of screening, which brings me to the point that I bought this house. It was a very expensive house and it was a very beautiful piece of land for the view. So from what I understand on Clap Street, they were given a 30% fund, so if they were to sell their house, it's going to decrease by 30%. So I would hope to have that same agreement for all the Butters here, which will cost you a pretty penny, because you're going to put me in debt in my house so that not only nobody will buy it, but I will be able to sell it. And then the people that you're talking about, that parcel of land, that's Curalea, nobody lives there. They use it as a sand and gravel. So what do they care if you come and put in screenings? Why don't you talk to the actual residents? And I'm sorry, I'm really, really upset and it's coming out, you know, intense, but I've had a lot to say while you guys have been speaking. You act like this is not affecting my life, my kid's life, my neighbor's lives, this is affecting the wetlands. This just affects so much. I mean, in my walks in the bogs today, this gentleman from Taunton says he's been coming there for years, just to recharge, as he called it. And I told him about the proposed solar plan, and he was just astonished. Nobody knows about it. I think this needs to be really, really looked at. It sounds like great revenue for the town, but really we're losing. We're just losing. We're losing our view. You know, and it's interesting how you stop that at Easton Town Line. And I think that's because we let those eastern residents know what was coming their way. And I think they probably had something to say about it. And I also understood in one of the last meetings that you did plan to purchase the 120 acres after the 190 days or 90 days wait. So did you state tonight that you were not going to purchase any more of the bogs? Will this be the only installation, the 60 acres?
Refer to the planning work, the one question you actually wanted to answer.
Well, let me just speak.
I said I got one, sorry.
I'm asking, a question was asked and I hope to answer at least.
Okay.
I can't speak to whether they want to or they have plans for Easton, but we can't approve or disapprove anything in Easton. So the application that we can deal with is important. I'll let them speak to what their plans may be in Easton, but we have obviously no control other than setting a precedent or lack thereof. But do you want to speak to whether there are plans to sell it in Easton even though, forgive, it's not part of our schedule?
There are no plans to, you know, we are, nothing's changed regarding that.
One other thing, I know the solar farm currently on Clap Street, I know you guys didn't build it, however, they're having trouble with the town enforcing the noise barrier and the screening. I don't really like your answers about the screening because there's a lot of we-thinks, we-imagines. I want, we know for sure this screening will work. I also want to know, what other large products, projects have Nexon completed? Where have they been completed? What are the outcomes of those projects? Are they on buildings? Are they on farming lands? Are they, where are they? What have you done? From what I understand on LinkedIn, you have 11 to 50 people in your company? Is that true?
I guess that's true, and there's been, the projects are listed on the website as well.
Can you mention some, please?
We did, we've done a number of projects in Middleborough, we've done.
How large?
They range in size from 600 kilowatts to 3 megawatts.
Well, Lincoln, would you say in good shape?
Thank you.
Roughly 5 acres per megawatt. And then we've also done a lot in Vermont.
And when were those placed?
I'm not sure how this is relevant.
I think they want a fund of reference.
Yeah, guarantee that these are going to be safe.
There are issues in another, I can't speak to them, but the assumption is that.
We have confidence.
If there's development that you've done elsewhere based on the patterns by themselves, that there were no issues.
If you want to give me your email address, I'm happy to send you a whole list of all the projects we've completed today.
I can absolutely do that, but I think every Butter deserves that information.
I can send it to you.
I just want to make sure that you've answered, I mean, your questions have been answered.
Well, again, the screenings for sound.
So I don't think you answered the question about property values.
Property values, screenings.
Can we just speak to the property value case? I have not looked at the agreement, but on the Clap Street, no issues with Clap Street, that project. But as it pertains to, there was a $100,000 fund set up for three years. I haven't seen the agreement, so I can't give you the specifics of it. But there was a $100,000 agreement that was part of the special permit approval, or I believe three years, I think, sorry, three years, that in essence protected property values in the case of sale.
For seven people, right?
I'm sorry.
For seven people, right?
Uh, probably, yeah.
What does that mean, protects the values?
Again, I have to look at the agreement. I assume that something that takes a benchmark of, in other words, if houses in Norton appreciated, and I'm just making this up, I haven't seen it. If houses in Norton, based on assessments values, appreciated 5% during the three years, and those properties in essence depreciated, then there, the conclusion that agreement, I assume, jumps to that that decrease in light of everyone else's increase should be due to the solar farm, and that would be actionable in terms of access to the farm. I'm doing that only on speculation because I'd have to see the agreement, but I do know the agreement is part of the special. I'm sorry, doesn't matter.
Thank you. My name is Matt Davis. I'm a attorney with the law firm of Marcus Arico, American Brooks &amp; Brant Tree. I appreciate that you're my associate, case your jobs, welcome to the firm. We represent about 20 to 25 of the homeowners in this area, which means about 40 to 50 of the residents in the area surrounding it, basically on all sides. I would say I've represented other order groups before, this is probably the most well-organized and most motivated group I've ever represented to have tried to set this. I know the point you were, is obviously analyzing this application through two angles. You have the request for a special permit in the event for some reason the zoning bylaw amendment is rejected by the Attorney General or otherwise appealed. And also, obviously, you have the site plan approval application before you in the event the zoning bylaw is actually approved.
I'm just, just to correct the record, because also, can you use for a special permit because of the weapon?
Yes.
There's a special permit on the farm regardless.
Regardless, but, I'm sorry, thank you. As far as the zoning bylaw, I know that as far as your concern, obviously, that issue is somewhat resolved in some, but there's nothing you can do. Clearly the matter is with the Attorney General now for the standard review. Tonight, obviously, I'm mostly focusing on what's before you, and obviously, we were just retained recently, so I haven't really delved into the zoning bylaw, but I have looked at it. I do think there's some issues there, which it can probably be either overturned by the Attorney General or rejected, I should say, by the Attorney General, or if not, because their review is very limited. There are other grounds in which I'm sure you know zoning bylaws can be challenged, and I do think there are some good grounds to challenge this. So I just, that's why I kind of want to talk about the special permit for a little bit, because I do think there's a review that I do that this could get either rejected by the AG's office or maybe overturned on an appeal by the owners or whatever it might be. As far as the special permit, you know, obviously, you know what the criteria are that has to be with the advantage of the proposal, have the, not just outweigh, but far outweigh any detrimental effects that the project would have. It's pretty clear, obviously, the detrimental effect, and you've heard from one Butter, I know there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and you heard from others, and I'm sure you're going to hear from many more people tonight. They also submitted, I think, a seven or eight-page letter to, well, yesterday or the day before, hopefully you've all seen that, if not, I'm sure you can get a copy of it. It is extremely thorough, far beyond any research that I could ever do, and again, very impressive what this group has been able to do in such a short period of time. I'll spare you the details of that, because again, you've obviously read, able to read it. That really speaks to some of the special permit issues. I do want to touch on a couple of the highlights in that. Obviously, there's health issues, there's the concerns regarding sound, which we talked about a little bit. You know, they've attempted to address that. I don't think they've addressed it adequately. I think a peer review is an excellent idea. Obviously, the adverse impact of the historic and scenic nature of Bay Road, and why not there's going to be adequate screening on that. And again, obviously, the screening for the Butters as well. I mean, the project of this kind of type and magnitude just doesn't seem appropriate for what is essentially a residential, not essentially residential, but it is only residential. And, you know, one of the things I was kind of reading, I was reading through everything and trying to figure out what the applicant's, you know, motivations were here with filing the zoning bylaw amendment, and so it will let me off right off of my head. Well, the best proof that they can't satisfy the special permit criteria, which has a bar up here, is shown by the applicant themselves in the fact that they asked for the zoning bylaw change so they can then rotate the bar to the site plan approval, which as you know is a much lower bar. If the applicant felt they could meet the high burden of a special permit, then they would have gone that way. I've represented developers before in filing a special permit, we think it looks good. We asked for a zoning change to do an end around, that's exactly what they did, because they knew they couldn't satisfy the high burden of a special permit. Their own actions are in addition to that. Finally, in terms of the site plan approval, you know, I know that obviously, site plan approvals are not usually denied, or rather, conditions are imposed. However, there are standards for denial of the site plan approval. Some of those standards are the problems presented by the site are so inflexible that there are no reasonable solutions to overcome such problems. The certain conditions of the proposed development threaten the public health and safety, and the proposed development is so intrusive on the interest of the public in one aspect or another that rejection by the planning board is justified. In my opinion, and again, I haven't been involved since recently, but I haven't read a lot over the last 40 hours, I'll have to finish up. All those conditions apply here. There's no reasonable conditions that can be imposed that will overcome the inherent problems with this plan and with this site. Specifically, there's a few objectives, just want to kind of work on that, I'll wrap up here. There's obviously on the landscape, and I know that's one of the objectives you guys have for site plan approval. The report was insufficient in that the existing trees will be preserved, but in what they added, we've heard from one of us, in fact, that what they're proposing to add won't be sufficient. In addition, they're not really adjusting how they're going to impact, you know, deal with any of the noise impact either. The bylaw states that the landscaping should be used to separate and screen incompatible land to reduce potential nuisances and reduce the view of unsightly buildings. Obviously, the solar panels are going to be unsightly. I have a feeling that even with the screening, and maybe they can answer the question, that I suspect the neighbors and the Butters can still be able to actually see the solar panels. So it's still going to be unsightly, that's one of your criteria in your site plan approval. And then finally, most of the companies that pursue the article 20 of the bylaw, there's a heightened level of scrutiny for these types of projects. Specifically, the solar photovoltaic installation that is adjacent to residential uses shall require the work intensive screening that we took with the project. We appear to have, as I was just saying, oh, it's 200 yards away, and I think this goes to one of the board members' points down there. 200 yards, I turn my feet away, that's only 2/3 of a football field, I mean, that's not, don't tell me that, you know, that's really far away and I'm not going to be able to see it. Proceedurally, I guess this is more a question for the board, but I don't think the board can approve this until the Attorney General has signed off, given that they're applying the zoning bylaw, but I'll defer to you for a little bit on that. So it seems that obviously, we're going to be waiting around for a while, which, the point of my making that point is that clearly, there's time to get a peer review done, but you're going to have to wait for 90 days for Attorney General. I know he asked for expedite, everybody asked for expedited, it doesn't happen, they just went through it in another town. They take the 90 days, sometimes it takes longer than they ask for extensions and they get it. So you certainly have time to peer review this and continue this, clearly, they're premature. Finally, I guess I just want to talk, we can talk about the process here, speaking of some of the lobbying arguments recently. And I asked him, I said, hey, listen, I represent developers that do projects that neighbors don't like, but before my clients, my developer clients, even step foot in the town hall with a piece of paper and application, they will reach out to the neighbors on their own, have a meeting at the community center or whatever, and say, hey, we're ABC Development Company, we're going to build this thing, we know we're not going to let it, but we want to talk to you, we want to talk to you about the project, see what your concerns are. That's good PR, it's a good thing to do for a big company that wants to come in the town. They did not do this. They went to the town first and just jammed it down the throat with the zoning bylaw, and now they're jamming this down the throat with the Butters here. And that's poor business practice. I mean, for a company of this size, who presumably you want something that you're going to be in this town for a long time, you'd think that they would have a little more sense in how they would operate and would have met with the Butters right out of the gate, and maybe some of these concerns could have been taken account of, and you would have to keep revising these site plans. So it's just disappointing to see that. That's really it. I've listened to lots of English requests, I've seen the application denied, clearly no decision made tonight. Now again, I don't think you can defend procedurally until the Attorney General signs off on the zoning bylaw, since that's what the request is under.
Just in the afternoon, I want to respond. Two things before you leave, I actually get a car, it's cold. But just so that we're clear, this is still proceeding, notwithstanding the here-to-for requires, and the Attorney General's office does, notwithstanding the here-to-force requirement for a special permit for large-scale solar facilities. Whatever happens with that, this still needs a special permit because it's in western protection.
Yes. I just have a ten reason.
I understand, just so people understand that this still requires a special permit, notwithstanding what happens with here-to-they.
Exactly, so, sorry, I would be glad to slash my special permit criteria and get them here.
And then, as far as, again, I got to use, let me second Adam to respond, as far as the Attorney General's office, it's my understanding that they can proceed at their own risk, but I'm not an attorney.
Well, they can proceed with building, but you can't approve an application if there's no zoning bylaw that you're proving on there.
Well, I'll leave that to counsel.
Sure.
Given the fact that we're proceeding with a special permit in any case.
Yes.
And then, again, I'll leave that to others to decide, and clearly, before we make a decision, we'll have to get back to the county council, but Adam, you willing to respond?
Yeah, just say the attorney incorrectly jumped to a pretty significant conclusion when he said that he requested for the amendment, for the bylaw to be amended to allow for large-scale solar projects, the site plan review, so the special permit. The only thing that we were involved in was changing the language to allow for project, dual-use projects at Cranberry Bogs, that town was interested in doing the change regarding the special permit to get the green, to get access to green supply.
It's only truly, both your satisfied with your ability to answer and. Yes, sir.
Chuck Allen, if I was a computer, if I had a special meeting, I asked them, Tom Meyer, after this bylaw is changed, if they're willing to do these Greenberry Bogs solar things on the rest of the Greenberry Bogs, as well as the other Greenberry Bogs, I'm sure they will. And that's a significant, but it's, I mean, I'm confused with what can be given on these bogs, what existing bogs.
So I would just, I can only assume that if they can take advantage of the change in bylaw that allows to do a use, then so it's on our side, we have no other application under those considerations, but.
Excellent question, can we leave it?
No, I think you're right.
How long have you folks been in operation with this process for the bogs in Norton specifically?
Last meeting, I mentioned that it's been there for about nine months.
And that's you yourself, what, what, your company of all?
That's.
That's it?
Yeah.
So you have nine months to contact 124 homes, and you haven't contacted one of us until today, correct?
No, it's not.
You contacted other people, other residents? Not where, not where. Well, I'm going to, that's, you have a question, which is sort of, you know, the other question I have, the board is, last meeting, again, I was supposed to look into the other four communities that turned down. I was wondering if anybody has one, you know, towns that turned down, it's been on the line, which, you know, there was four other towns that said no of this plan, and where the fifth one was getting paid, so. Have you talked to anybody before?
Yeah, I know Dartmouth didn't pass the bylaw, that's the reason they turned down.
There was one reason?
Yes, oh, from what I heard.
For what it's worth, I reached out to West Ridge, or I haven't heard back.
How many Butters, I can only ask on occasion, how many told? How many barters, I can only tell this location, how many total are there?
Two.
Two. And where's the second one located?
They're located on the same path.
And that first one was relocated, it was initially been relocated because you found that there was somebody else's property that it numbers on that?
No, that's not correct.
And why wasn't changed from there was?
In response to the barters' concerns at the last hearing regarding noise in the house.
Well, should that have been common knowledge? Should that have been common knowledge, thought process that is so close to our house that it would have been heard?
So when we look at the map that we provided at the last meeting, the noise levels, even where it was originally proposed, fall to background levels by this point where it, the applications is to residences, even that application. And it's the same with ENF. And that is the optimal location for it from an operational perspective. But in response to the concerns that we heard last week, we thought, you know, even though we believe it to be in the safe location where it was originally, we'll move it as far as we possibly can, which is in that new question. And it makes it harder, more difficult for us to install there, more difficult for us to move it. But we did that in response to the concerns and hope that we do that.
What type of security fence will be installed around this power plant that you built?
There will be security fencing around the e-brider and battery storage containers. And we are not proposing fencing around the remainder of the array. The National Electric Code states that solar project should be fenced if the cables are within, are easily reachable to untrained persons. Given that these panels are elevated temperature in the air and the wiring will also be elevated temperature in the air, that's not considered to be easily reachable by untrained persons. So we know technically we need a fence and understanding that a lot of the neighbors use the property for their enjoyment, walking the dogs. We put forward that, you know, we're okay to continue people having that access.
When I was a kid, we used to handle, we used to play in the heat and fire field all the time. We climbed a lot of trees. Once we started kids, we went in and climbed those pins. Not that they should do it, but kids are kids.
If the barters would prefer us to fence, we would be happy to do that.
I think that should be mandatory. You should have a totally, because if you're being put in access, like as we came down. What about surveillance? Would you be able to have surveillance on property? Or would it be an off-site location where the camera might go work somewhere or anything like that?
Typically have surveillance cameras at the e-brider pad.
I'm sorry, where?
At the e-brider pad.
But at entrance ways?
Yeah, at the end of the way, yes.
So what about trespassing? Trespassing, you know, kids going in with money, showing the women have, obviously, kids go drink them, whatever, if they do. Not right, but they do it. There's never, there'd be nothing there, but other people going in and going there?
Not sure what your question is.
Well, I think if kids can climb a fence, because there are any type of cameras that can see movement throughout the whole process. Kids jump the fence, in case they're on the back path and want to work on the, sort of the bar tonight. I'm not saying kids, but for the kids, is there anything that you can fix? Or you'll see them. I mean, we have cameras in the schools. We see anything in all schools and the lighting was up, certain things don't work. I'm not saying that you should.
Are you requesting that we put in additional security cameras?
I'm asking if you would, if you intended to put in cameras.
Well, we typically have security cameras at the e-brider pad and have access gates.
Power, how's all that?
How tall is the fence? If you're going to screen.
If you ask the question, I recognize you on five to five meters.
What type, when we go to work with you as far as what type of fence we want to build? Because we don't want like a seasonal fence that's pushing wood when they're on a construction site. It would be huge, strong, maybe twelve-foot, I'd fence, constantly why we'd be going to that. To keep kids out and it wouldn't get hurt. That's what I'm concerned about.
That's the typical e-brider fence is at seven foot long, five square feet.
Would we exempt the bylaw on the property for the fire department? Is there some type of a fire extinguisher system set up with it?
There, we do have remote access, like a located acquisition systems that would allow us regarding a fire in the e-brider pad. And typically, we can set that up so that it would automatically alarm the fire department as well.
Without any concern, you see, um. Would there be space for lawyers being supposed to move around and get access there with the fire truck they had to go in? Or a couple of police guys, if somebody got hurt, and they had to bring in a ladder truck or, you know, there's always going to be one person to go, two guys to go back and forth, but if there were one to look around. It's like a trench truck and a police crews across paths on those roads.
The fire department has, or, sorry, the fire trucker has personally declared typically whether it would afford its access for emergency vehicles. Typically, the fire department's response to a fire at a solar project, if there is one, is to use the ladder, hard enough, you know, to try to throw it out.
A little bit burning, a drum or chemical into the air, and dozens.
I honestly am not aware of a solar project that caught fire. So I don't know. I just, I know when the fire department reviews it, their plan is if there ever was a fire, if they do not try to put it out, they would simply be there to provide access for safety.
If somebody would get in the car, those two e-briders caught fire, would they have brought that to the environment or?
I don't know. I'm not aware of that. I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened.
Has the fire department been trained on how to handle solar fires? Any training at all for them?
They have requested training as part of the process.
Would the fire department, or police department, have to contact National Electric to turn off the power before they can address the emergency? Would they have like lots of time to tell them, lights come down, you have to wait half an hour, sometimes two or three hours for National Electric to lunch up the number? Is there a kill switch on the property on site that they have access to, or is there some place where they have to wait for the company?
Multiple. There would be a really, there's actually, we have to, those are very stringent labeling procedures that have very visible and easily, the disconnect is easily reachable and to be a disconnect.
As a novice, number wise, how many panels can you expect, what number on the project? In little panels, would you?
The original design is, it was around 24,000.
Twenty-five thousand original panels? I just want to finish by saying that this is an industrial-sized power plant in our eyes. And definitely one in our neighborhood. And you guys seem like nice people. I know you're just making a living and everybody cares too, but we don't want that out back there. We don't, we don't want this danger. We've been on long-term studies on any of this. We're going to buy a gate in town and we don't want it out back there. Who's going to know what we did when the houses run out? They bring it on all day long. But this is going to be two feet from my kid's bedroom. Really, my kid's bedroom. It's going to affect on all of them. We don't know because most of us would have done. The sound is obviously going to bother us, we have this break plate from what our neighbor had, had a house in the other home. And it's not going to affect anybody here because maybe here, where's the, we do. Also, we can't trust that there'll probably be a stall on these sixty acres. And I'll tell you why. It's because you don't submit ladder side planes on everything. We find areas of someone else's property. We put the e-brider on someone's property. You know, once we left our flood plans on site plans, the conservation committee meeting, and they really said there'd be no houses to burn in the park on the west side, but there was two. And all this is what, their homework should have consisted before they even came to us, before they came to town. And it didn't. So this is how they're going to be coming twelve times a year. It's going to be like those girls from the table. How do we like, yeah, we don't want to be getting pissed. Everybody knows what happened a hundred years ago. We don't want something like that to happen here. We want our kids to, we don't want our kids to get cancer. Studies have not been done long-term to show us that's not going to happen. Nothing's been done to show us our groundwater is not going to be affected five years from now, with this project. Out of respect, I would ask you to strongly consider that. We don't have $200,000 in yet. We don't mind solar panels. We hope the town goes green. And not the expense, the safety, a lot of kids, it's definitely not possible.
I think the lady's standing, I saw her here in court, it's not against you, ma'am, but I just wanted to try to.
Yeah, it's just a quick question. East Market Street on Blue Garden Lane. There was no mention of.
Where?
Blue Garden Lane in East, along the town line. The log is literally in my backyard. I'm just curious, if there was no mention of screening running east to west along the town line border? Is there any plan?
No.
And why not?
We, so, we purposely stopped the screening to the south of the town line in order to protect the future of the resident in order. And planting trees along the town line would interfere with that future.
Will interfere with what? I'm sorry?
That future.
Their view, well, it certainly negatively impacts the view of the residents on east and on outside. So it doesn't seem that appropriate.
What about right along the solar panel? That would be within the block, which isn't, isn't functional, within the block, so you can do it off of the block.
Hi, I'm Cheryl London, 130 Bay Road, we're about fifty feet from the box. You had mentioned that you have seven people in your company total. Is that correct?
Yes, including the O&M fellow, it's, it's seven to fifteen, depending on work we have.
Okay, and I'm not familiar with O&M.
Operations department.
Okay, so is that considered agricultural? Those are the people that actually have experience harvesting the logs since this is a dual license?
No, no, we're, we would be hiring the same company that manages the bylaws now to continue managing the logs. The current owner is not a brand new owner. He hires out to actually manage the growing, pollination, and be able to manage the logs. And that's actually very common practice, not just in cranberries, but in all types of agriculture. A lot of times, the man don't, you know, go down to a farmer. And so you can hire, you hire out farmers to farm.
Okay, so you're going to be outsourcing that piece, as you're doing. Okay. And then the other question that I have is, we talked about the stakes in the panels that's going to be drilled down. How far are they going to go again? Is it 10 feet down?
That will depend on the final geological results. We expect it's an average around 15 feet.
Fifteen feet down to the ground. And how many panels again are we talking?
It was 24,000 in the original submitted, and I'm checking the numbers on the revised submitted.
Okay, and what are the dimensions of these stakes?
The stakes are the panels.
The stakes going into the ground.
They will be a maximum of one square foot, so 12 inches by 12 inches. And that would only be in certain locations where we need the additional support due to, you know, producer soil conditions. The standard pure dimension is six inches by nine inches.
So give me a rough estimate. So we're not talking 2,400 stakes. We're saying how many, rough, rough estimate?
That number was included in our, it was an intent to, remember.
I don't think we've got a copy of that.
It is available. And we're happy to send it to you if you want.
Sure.
But I have to look at that. Again, I don't have any number posted, so maybe.
Okay, so, um, just let us know. That's, I'll shoot you a second.
Hold on for a second. This gentleman, actually, was a neighbor.
This is a land, you said you're raising it. What number, why don't they have a number on that block right there?
What do you mean by raising?
You said you're raising it. I have something you, at the beginning, electrical or?
Oh, the underground conduit. So for all of the panel, the blocks of panels, all of them.
Yeah.
The plans originally show the underground electric conduit that connects to the panels as being underground. And we're now proposing.
You should be raising it up more.
Do you want to accelerate it possible?
Right, I could finish. So what we're doing now is that conduit that was underground within these blocks, so there was, you know, for example, this one, I think there was a line that ran this direction, underground. We're now taking that line and putting it suspended in the, in the air on the racking.
What would that look like? That's might be.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah, the wire is essentially tucked up into the racking itself, running. It's essentially.
That would be about to do, but?
No, that, that won't. That's a low voltage DC wire.
And how much height will that make it?
It won't change the elevation.
The block is connected from.
So what, why is there not a number on that block?
I think it is numbered, it's just.
This is a big block. This is block three.
Oh, so that's all one block.
Because I had an independent, two independent, one a real estate investor, one a real estate broker. Came in my house, the real estate broker came in my house. And, you know, saw how much our house was valued. They both sent letters, I've got to give you guys here. So you have all of our, the E is almost combined together, the separate companies. And the real estate broker told us that, leaving my wife, you know, we'll lose 10 to 20% value if we sell our house. Even now, because it's out there and stuff like that. And we asked her why. She, you know, it's unhealthy. It's unsafe. No one wants to raise their kids. And everybody will say, I say, ooh, I want to buy five bedrooms a home, raise my kids next to this new good apartment, even though I know it's not a good apartment, but you know it. And I'm not at all one to get something like that. So that's a big concern for us, really going and losing value. If I'm taught, oh, they were up 30% of the electrical bill. And I thought, from what I heard, I thought it was $200,000 a three year. And it's just, you know, there's nothing in it. And I feel like really unfair to us, what's, what, because we're not.
We're not through the process, so I don't want to say what will or not be approved, so.
Well, that's one of the things I would like to please consider, like you said, not completely at all. Because the value of what we're looking at is a lot of money. And you think about it, if you really thought about it, I'm going to take my kids and my wife and I'm going to move there? It's just, really, we all know this. We all feel it, we all see it. Poor girl over there, two away. I don't know that, but I just saw her voice. I hear that from my wife all day, you know? I'm just seeing, so can you see, she didn't sleep. So I mean, I wouldn't sleep. And now, if I send you a video, you're now saying, woo, I'm not going to hang out with Gavin, my best friend, my next door neighbor. It's just, I know that's what you're concerned. I know, I can understand that, it's all part of it. You can hear it in my voice. We're scared. We don't want it. We love it. I mean, it's awesome. I came from Brooklyn, New York City, to this little town, the way I want my kids to grow up. And it's great. And the other concern I have is, you know, we know that you guys, you know, like your kids are going in. But, you know, if you were, you'd pay us to put up signs.
Don't let them do that. And that was not relevant to what we're doing. You saw me up there taking signs and that.
I've got to say, you bet. No, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to defend it and I don't want, I don't. I just wouldn't look at that or something like that. You know, I just, I want to make sure you've got your questions now. And I do have one more question. Ah, that question, do you have that? So they, now the law that it was hard, it got, that goes through, that the rest of the box, make sure that it cannot be put in little panels.
That would require an amendment to the thing again. I don't assume anything, but.
To make clear your point.
If it was not approved, it would be approved for only this. Any addition, any change whatsoever to the footprint of this would require a whole move special permit as long as it's still within the special, still within the weapon protection district. Notwithstanding what might happen to the GED's review of the bylaw. But just, again, any of this in weapon protection district still requires a special permit. So anything that would be added to this, if it were reviewed, would require either, if it's minor, a minor amendment, or if it's major, it would be almost not a permit. But I just want to make sure, there's a gentleman back here and then back here. But I just wanna make sure, there's a gentleman back here, and then back here, uh, this here, uh, here, here, and then there.
Kristoff, trying to find a bit of room. I'm not only scared, I'm angry, I'm angry, right? Um, I, I don't profess to represent anybody else in this room but myself and my wife, okay? We also had a real estate professional committee to our house, in G and Plus. First, first thing that goes through your head, you're putting 24,000, you, I'm putting 24,000 panels across the street, 200 feet from my house. I'm moving. I'm not even going to deal with this crap, I'm moving. Now it's out there, I've gotta get that. To George's point, 10 to 20%. Seven people on Clap Street, with, with all due respect, seven people on Clap Street with their value of their house in whatever it is, the houses alone, Bay Road, are all assessed, I know what I'm paying for taxes. My house is assessed in the 500s. Everybody in that world is in the 500s. I'm not a math genius, but guess what, I'm going to lose $100,000 in value. Okay, my number one scenario is safety. My wife, like, cancer down in, in Carver, living next to a bog that actually was using pesticides. Never proven was not, quote unquote, detrimental to you, we don't know what's gonna happen, cancer. Can you prove it? Can you disprove it? I'm angry, I'm scared. There is nobody in Bob's green earth, no private intended. You can plant something, and I'm gonna go up to this board, I live here now. How about 205, right here? You're telling me you're going to move this out to this line?
Yes.
Okay, this is my house in the last storm that we had, that we had 1.6 inches of rain. There is a sand gravel pit that is being used right here, along this area. They're pushing that gravel right up against the wall, I saw you up there today, and you're lucky I didn't have anything, okay? That gravel is now pushing the rainwater that I brought up to the conservation committee. And by the way, when you talk to the conservation committee about a peer review or any issue, you can only talk about the eight scenarios within the protection wetland aspect, okay? I talked about four, waterstorm drainage, pour, you can see my front yard. If the flows two days after that rain, or the next day that that might take out.
Just, just ask one question, we're, I obviously don't know the area, but the bogs are probably 30 feet below.
Yeah.
How is it that the bogs 30 feet below are affecting groundwater on?
It's how the water is being pumped, it pushes over across the road, that is coming directly down across the road. If you ask 201, 203, 205, 207, it's coming from the street, it's no longer, they can no longer be-
Drainage.
It can no longer be off to, and this is my point, sir, this can no longer be off to the side of the bogs, because they pushed the gravel in the rocks and everything else up against that. That now water is now going off into my property, to the last two pages of the pictures you have there.
Oh, hold on, all right, here, I'll take from orange, just throw it to you.
That's the gravel. So, again, my office-
This gravel is below, below the, the level of Bay Road.
No, I'm telling you, what's happening?
I walked aside today, this gravel is below Bay Road.
Yeah.
Okay, so how, my question is, how does that water go up here, across Bay Road, into your town?
I'm not an engineer, I'm just telling you, I've lived there for 12 years. I never had flooding in my front yard until they started pushing that gravel up there. This raises a concern to me, that now you're going to start pushing some type of a barrier in addition up into this area, that not only is my new dealing with a safety concern, now I've got water potentially gonna be an additional concern. That makes it that much easier to sell my house. You not only have your 24,000 solar panels, you might be able to use them to surf in your own freaking front yard.
Just so that, because there are a lot of people.
I understand.
I, I, to be honest, I don't have debate issues, I wanna ask questions and get answers.
I understand, I'm, I'm, the thing is, so, again, my point is, I'm, I'm scared, I'm angry. I don't feel, I feel like we're doing, this is being ramroded and going around the back way. And excuse me, if I ever went into a client and didn't have the answers that you've been asking, don't have the answers, sir?
Sir, oh, sir. Again, I've actually asked questions, and I've got questions that have been asked, that haven't been answered before I get to answer them. I don't, Dave, I really wanna get to-
I understand, I understand.
If there are questions, I mean, you made your sentence, but I'm not real smart, but I know I can.
Okay, I'm asking the board. If you bought where your land is today, and I don't know where anybody on the board lives, and I obviously sat through the land's deep street question. If somebody came up to your neighborhood and said, we are going to put 24,000 solar panels next to your land, if you didn't, first of all, you didn't know about it. I understand that you need 48 hours, I understand these to be in the paper, I understand these to be on cable, I understand these to be certain things. People work 78 hours a week, I don't, I don't vote on table news, I don't vote on the newspaper.
But I, I just wanted, just, again, just-
I'm, I'm saying- I did, I did. Although I was away when that town, that- I understand, however, sir, when that town meeting took place-
I don't wanna talk about town meeting, I'm talking about-
I understand, but when this, when this whole thing started going in, I feel, and I can now speak for, again, I'm speaking for myself, I feel like this is being backdoored in a big way. I'm just asking the board, again, this is something that has not been proven, it has been not tried and tested. We are dealing with people's lives here. You are elected officials of this town to protect the town people, not to sell us out for 200 grand.
And I'll let you guys decide which, which pool is worse, I, I don't-
Dave Wirthley, 19 Fairleigh Lane, I'm just gonna come up and kinda show you where that is, if that's all right. So, question again, a couple of just, um, so, I am here on this tall one, if you guys bought that bogs, you would see. So we built this house about six years ago because of the bune, because of the wetlands and more, but we're on hills, so we're like 30 feet above. My, my first floor living area, about 30 feet above, my second floor, about 40 feet above, with the bogs. And so we talked about screening, and at first I was all about screening, but the reality is, I don't want screening. You know, and we built there, I've been in Norton, my family, and I've been in Norton for over 50 years, and we stayed in Norton because I love it. I don't look like you guys are doing your job, you're doing your job. What I'm worried about is that, like, again, 200,000 dollars, kinda seems embarrassing to me, because I'm gonna lose 200,000 dollars on my property value, like, pretty quick. So that, to me, is a little concerning, but it's, the reason why we did this was because of the view. So we can screen, but that, that's, I guess those are my concerns, probably all of the health stuff, all of the abutters' concerns, I echo. But, one question I have, so that's my concern, so thank you for listening to that. But the question I have is, so now we have moved the other inverter up next to the existing inverter up the road. We don't have a hydrant, the, the closest hydrant is about, it's more than a quarter mile away down at the end of the corner of Fairleigh and Burke. So if there was anything that happened up there, I would think it would wipe out literally the whole, my whole side of Fairleigh Lane, right? So, we have, like, we have a, it's a paved road, and then it's this private road, and then it goes into a dirt road, and then there's a turnaround. So I would really consider, if all the thing goes through, that a hydrant be placed down there in case there was some type of emergency. It always worries me anyway, of a resident down there to have no access to any water. So that's just one question I would have, would that be a possibility to, to do something like that? And then about, you know, it's concerning to me that we're taking the natural landscape and it's gonna look, with all those 10-foot tall, it's gonna be very industrial, that, see, the idea of putting fences up would be, uh, would be more mind-boggling to me. But again, it's, it's that thing, we can't sell that, like, at all, or I mean, we wouldn't be able to recover any of that value. I sold my house to parents, so I got three generations of people living in my house. It makes a big difference, I guess I'm just asking the planning board to kind of be really reflective and, and think about what that means for the people that are living here. I've been paratized there a long time, I'm much older than I look. So, and like I said, we're, we're just, uh, what's that? What's that? Ask which? Oh, we did- I think, I want people to want people to ask that, yeah, yeah, sorry. I, I, I guess I'm, uh-
Okay, just, I have a question with you, I just wanna, um, are you the house that you can see from Bay Road, the yellowish tannish house? And you can see the backyard of what appears to be something, I guess it's raised, it's got- Hard to tell, because I didn't get up there later, I could see a house from Bay Road.
Yes, that's the big, the big house, there's two houses that you can see, so that might, so I'm the one, it's, it's raised down, my deck is like, my first land is over a lockout, covered up, light green with big deck.
Next to the yellow.
It's a 60-foot deck, so it's, yours is yellow, so mine is-
Okay, so I've heard about it, that's okay.
But mine, you'll see mine too, because I can see everybody's from where I am, like, I, I have a view of all of these abutters, and everybody does. So just, just, but please keep in mind that there is, I don't want that screen, there's no way to screen, reality-wise, you know? This lake right here, the, the river floods halfway up into the yard anyway, you can't do it. It's nice to say, but it's impossible to actually do, you'd have to put 40, 50-foot trees, big huge, monster trees, not gonna happen at all. This one, if you walked up there, you'd be able to hear in your, in your, so it's, it sounds good, it's good, and it's not really necessarily gonna happen. But I don't really want it to, that's why we moved there, exactly why we moved there, so, thank you.
So I think, I think you're one of the first people to come up from, from your street. It looks like you and number 15 are kinda the furthest towards the-
We are the last house on, yeah.
So, can you hear noise from the existing panels in your property?
That's a good question.
So obviously, I'm assuming you are probably the closest house to the existing panels that are in place now.
And we have two, so basically, what this does, so five years ago, no, no solar or anything. If you go through the turnaround, so my property goes coming in with the turnaround a little bit, like we have a game in, through the turnaround, up the hill, that behind there is a big huge solar field. If you go to right down their access road, up there is a great big solar field as well. So, this is gonna put solar fields literally on three sides of my house, which, when I built it, had no solar fields at all. So I have actually that inverter, this inverter, and then one more inverter, you can hear, and you can-
Yeah, I was gonna say, the first level, like-
It, it, it doesn't blow me away, but I'm, I'm half-dead, so.
But you can hear some.
You can hear it sometimes, yeah, sometimes, not all the time, to be fair, but sometimes you can.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, so we're adding another, another major one up there, so it just worries me.
Okay.
Just a question, you had a question that you wanted to ask, and I'll, I'll get to you, I just-
You gotta pick something from this side.
I'm sorry?
He was already talking about it, so I just wanted to-
So we're good?
Well, I was just gonna ask about, you know, with all the stakes and everything else going into the ground and drilling in, um, would it raise the groundwater levels? So it's better not to talk about drainage. I, I can't even-
All right, the question was, with all the piers being drilled into the ground, will that raise the groundwater levels?
No, so we did conduct, um, an analysis to the value of the floodplain combination area, which is mapped as floodplain, um, no, sorry, the area. So we conducted an analysis for the proposed work within the floodplain, which is a 100-year flood elevation, and found no significant effect. We did that based on very conservative assumptions, and we're currently undertaking a study to establish a specific elevation for floodplains, since that has not been done by FEMA, we'll update the calculation, um, but no, there would be no impact from the, the pier supports.
No, 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 I wanna recognize the gentleman to your right.
No, you said, I have a question, first statement, who did this study? That's all I know. So, they have, you know, like, they, uh, that, 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 so, you know.
I work for the OZ, Public Civil and Earthy Landscape Architecture Survey, and that's my specialist department. We are currently undertaking a 100-year flood elevation, we just established the elevation.
Just wanted to respond quickly to the gentleman compared to the money, uh, you know, preferring not to have a fence, um, it's actually, that's, we came in proposing not to have a fence, because we understand a lot of people like to access the bogs, and so in keeping with that, we proposed not having a fence, I'm just saying, you know, depending on, I guess I could, we could, work with the abutters to figure out what is actually the regenerative order you must have.
George from the Stone Run side, the old person, where is that located? Or raise it down here somewhere. Yeah, actually, I'm one of the few people that doesn't have a direct view of the cranberry bogs. Uh, but I am an abutter, obviously, I'm a few hundred feet through the woods, and a trail that goes to the cranberry bogs. I'm pretty familiar with these bogs, I think my dogs are ninety, ninety walks. I also used to live in Sharon, another property that I probably owns, I used to live, property by the buddy, his cranberry bogs as well. We're talking, it just seems like we're spending so much time figuring out the nuances of, uh, you know, like, a structure, a fence, the fact that you have to put a fence, or you're thinking about putting a fence, that, that's a game changer right there, because, these folks here that are exposed directly to the property, the view is a reason, no, it isn't, that, that you're taking away their view. And you're giving them a choice of either looking at an industrial one, uh, which is solar panels, or a fence. Uh, if you're familiar with that property, which most of these folks I'm sure are, I don't know what you could possibly do, uh, from a planning standpoint, that would ever cover that up. And if you cover it up, you know, what's the point? You know, you, you, it's, it's, it's a, it's a no-win situation there. But the, um, the thing that concerns me most is, my understanding, and I'm covering up the speed, just like everybody else here, a short amount of time, my understanding is that this was designed to help struggling farmers. Am I wrong in that assessment? Uh, and not just struggling cranberry bog farmers, but struggling farmers in general, correct? So, before, uh, before, uh, some of these conversations took place, my, my thought process was, it was, I think the gentleman from the last planning board meeting had said, um, and I think it was the gentleman from the, uh, the nursery, Bluey Nursery, that this kind of violates the spirit of the program. I mean, evidently, in Massachusetts, and I don't know a lot about this, but I'm doing some reading, uh, you know, farmers struggle, it's a seasonal state, so they get trouble making ends meet, cranberry bog farmers are no different. So, uh, I don't think, you know, I, I have a pretty technical background, and I don't really have any issues with solar technology. I mean, the jury's still out whether there's any long-term effects or not, but that isn't the issue. This is the right, this is good technology, it's just the wrong location, like I said. It, it affects a number of residential properties, that's the problem. And the fact that you're gonna, uh, seriously impact the financial well-being of a number of families, that to me is a game changer right there. That should be like, no, you can't, how, how can we, for, I'm gonna say we, how can the planning board, um, consciously say, we're gonna put this project in, we're gonna get $200,000 a year for the town, but you could take one hole, could lose $200,000 in value. And there was some discussion at the last planning board meeting, that, um, you know, there was, there was talk about reimbursement or compensation for the homeowners. The fact that you have to think about compensation means, there's a problem right there, seriously impacting the market value of these homes. And, you know, the market changes so much, and there's so many variables, who's to say that it's not 50,000, you know, one month, and 150,000 the next month? I don't think the town's gonna, gonna cough up $100,000 or $200,000- I don't think the town's gonna, gonna cough up $100,000 or $200,000 of property if that's what the effective value is. That's gonna cost way more than you'd ever make with the proceeds from what the farms, the farm would give you. Now, the, I talked about the, I don't know Fred Bottomley, I'm sure he's a wonderful man. And I love the bogs. There's something to be said for the way the bogs look. That's part of the beauty of a rural scenario. It's, it's just nice to look at. And, you know, on this side of town, and I live, you know, I'm on a cul-de-sac, I'm kinda shielded from everybody else, but I understand what these folks are saying, because if it, if that happens, then who knows, something else is gonna happen, and eventually, it affects everybody. If everyone starts to move out in their well-being mode, you know, that's not that far from my property. It's got an impact. It's got an impact of the, the value of the property, that's our indirect view. But what I learned here, I think, from this gentleman, was Fred Bottomley isn't even a farmer. He's a landlord.
So, only because the hour is getting late, I've got a good hour.
So, so, I talked about Bottomley's area. So Fred Bottomley's landlord, why would this even qualify? Why is this, does the planning board have the authority to squash this project?
Not with it.
Do you have the, do you have the, do you have the authority to, to...
Not with it.
To not move?
Yeah.
Moving forward?
Yes, we can approve this special program.
Okay, so, talking about Fred Bottomley, he's a landlord, he's not a farmer. This program isn't...
But, but, again, this is where I thought we were going. We, we don't either oversee the program, we certainly didn't develop the program, and whether it's, it's a manipulation of the program, I'll leave for others to decide. What we, as a planning board, have to do is see how this proposed project fits in with the town, or something like that. So, my point is, you know, Fred Bottomley, we're doing, whether he's a farmer, or whether he's an apple tree grower, it is immaterial, but, and so if we can get to, if there's more questions to wrap this up and move, continue. I really don't wanna get into Fred Bottomley and that motivation.
All right, well, I'm not interested in that, basically, it's the same, the program is not designed for this scenario.
And I understand your point, and I, you know, I...
And I think, and I think we've got to move forward, because we're in a, the far end, far end of the town. So, majority of the town, people would go, "Yeah, we need money in the town, or, oh, that's, they're gonna put us off farming there, let's not do it near my house, so no problem, let's, let's use that." That's what happened. But I would argue, any of those, any of those factions of the other voters, if this was happening in their, in their neighborhood, and they had viewers, they would be affected by it, they would not want it. And so would you folks. If you had a viewer that across the, I can cross the street, I would, I would think, you'd wanna think twice about it. But Fred Bottomley also has a property in Sharon, the one I was talking about before. Has that, because the one in Sharon...
Yeah.
These are, these are, well, really, yes.
I don't really care what happens in Sharon. I've got enough problems trying to figure out what we're doing here.
All right, how about this question? Let me ask the question. I'll get off the soapbox, I'll get off the soapbox. With, so, whose idea was it for your next son, right? Whose idea was it for next son to purchase the property? Was that next son's motivation, or was that Fred's motivation?
We're generally agnostic as to whether to purchase or lease, and I did prefer to sell.
Would the lease arrangement ever...
Yes.
Yeah. If you didn't want it. Okay. I'll be done with it. No, badly, there's cranberry bog tours. Don't need them on it now, but if you put a solar over it, they're never gonna be on. Like I said, I, I have no issue with technology, I have no issue with, with the program, I think the smart program's an excellent program to help farmers. This just isn't the right scenario. It's, it's wrong on a number of levels, and I just hope that the planning board sees through that, and to reiterate that, I'm gonna read you the, the thing from, an excerpt from the Dartmouth, as a result of the Dartmouth Planning Board meeting. This is quoted from dartmouth.com, and it's a reporter that reported on the meeting. And it goes to as to why they voted it down, and it's also next son, correct? You guys?
Yes.
So, the planning board was also surprised to learn that Bottomley intended to sell his property to next son, a fact that members of the planning board noted had not been disclosed at public hearings, and I don't think we did until last, last, the last meeting, and was only brought up by boards member John Susan after he, after he read it in the booth. So that wasn't the story that's up front for them. It says, "The idea did not sit well with the planning board, who viewed the sale as risky, making the project solar first, farming second." A motion next son officials reviewed, which I can understand it with. One of the members said, "You're skirting the law," because the law is made to help our farmers. Said member Lori Ann Miller, "The laws are not made to help you." The board unanimously voted to not recommend the articles passage at town meeting. And I hope you do the same.
That material, I just wanted to respond to that point. That material was part of what was submitted. What the Dartmouth Planning Board apparently did was not act on an application for a solar farm. What the Dartmouth Board did was vote to recommend non-passage of a zoning area. They did not act on an application, although I was afraid enough to realize that the zoning article passed, and an application would be forthcoming. But just to be clear, they did not vote on a solar application, they voted to not recommend a zoning area. Let me just, you know what, it's 10:30, you still have some things to do, and this, this is not gonna be done tonight, so I'm going to call an end to the discussion for tonight. We are going to, obviously, have to continue this, but we still have some internal business, and that's it. That's it for tonight.
We did, it's like two weeks, we have a little more to add.
Well, we're gonna continue to the 28th.
We have a little time.
Uh, yes.
We have a first one. Yeah. We're gonna be able to, we're gonna be able to talk a lot of the form, yes, I have a million hours on afternoon. Should I, are you thinking, are you thinking it's almost on?
No.
Yes.
On your respect, we're gonna continue to the 28th, or else we could be here till tomorrow from your count.
Sir, we went to 11 o'clock last night, we had to do 11.
We have some internal stuff to do, and it's now 25, it's 10 of the last.
Well, we're all here.
Well, that, that so will be true. At the end of discussion, I can close the meeting right now. We're gonna continue to the 28th, if there's a motion to that effect. And you're all invited back, and I sense is that most of you will be back.
Bring a friend.
So, I was gonna say, continue to the 28th, or if there's been a second, you want to use the square.
I'll make one point to the audience. It's all your role to send whatever you would like in advance, letting board in advance. We've got a staff at this, before this meeting, and that's maybe, so if you have comments that you'd like to show at the meeting. And folks, just, if, to be fair, to those who have not had a chance yet to speak, if you've already spoken, please let others ask their questions first before we circle back, just to be fair to your neighbors.
Can't let people speak for an hour before we get to speaking.
I want to contact them. Hey. The most precise, I continue to the 28th. I'm crazy.
They wouldn't do anything, it's on there, I would make them hose down with sand, and they'd be sitting there, they'd get all that sand right, every time they had a...
Thank you. See you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've become a trust, I save my friends for all my...
This is many times, he must have known, but...
Amazing, amazing.
Japanese, Japanese.
And they've been good at a sense, so sometimes they're, they're, they're like that.
Yeah, they are, I've seen it.
And then you have to do, you have to, you have to, you know, you have to, yeah.
Yeah. You can't go with the third, you can't go with the third, that, what, when I'm in the company.
Yeah.
Every day, you do, it's like, you know, like, it's hard to handle.
Yes, we do. We get the, 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 the...
We're still gonna have meetings, and we're still gonna have...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I understand.
So, that's approved, I said we'll move to approve the minutes of January 8th as presented.
A second.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm gonna fill the door, I can't hear you now.
Well, I'll amend that to reflect the changes as presented.
And that's okay.
Double down on the second.
Okay.
Double down on motion, double down on second.
I'll favor preserving the minutes of January 8th as amended. See, I've closed the extensions as announced. Someone make a motion on that?
Well, I had submitted a couple of grammatical corrections via email. There was just some, you know, again, just more grammatical. It said, "is any," should have been "if any," "where," should be "were."
Those should be changed now.
Yeah.
Are they?
Actually, yeah, those changes were made, "if any," yeah, the ones that were submitted are forward, yes, those changes have been made.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
And, and, you know, I did just, you know, add a comment, it was great to see all the questions listed, but to the extent that any simplified summary of a response to those questions to be documented in the minutes, I don't know. I mean, I'm asking, I'm asking a lot, because there's a lot of talking and a lot, I can't imagine trying to write all this stuff down myself, so. I don't know how, we really didn't have enough of that, to be, and got more now. Yeah, just want, we just wanna be careful that minutes don't become, you know, minutes are, you know, just brief summaries. We probably went beyond by putting all the questions that were in there, because we don't want this to grow into beyond more of actions taken, or, or, you know, typically the minutes, you'll say, just talk, discussion focused on the top, following topics, and it doesn't typically go into the level of detail, right? You want just to listen to the people who spoke. Well, that is, I mean, without the options.
Other than what have answered those, if you wanna put something in there, the community questions which were answered at the meeting, the answers are available on the videotape.
Yeah, if you're a resident, you're reading this, you're looking at, okay, I see all these questions. Yeah, we have what was answered, what wasn't answered. If you, yeah, just list, you know, community questions from, like Joe just said.
My, my idea of a practical approach, I mean, was maybe to pick some of the most common ones, and put the responses for those, and then, I don't know how we'll, I can reference however you want the rest of the questions. I have them right now in here, well, as far as I could, so, but whatever you guys think is the best way, I'm willing to do, but it is a lot to try to navigate the back and forth, and that's why the video, I think, is great.
Because I'm a little nervous about summarizing.
I don't want to be held to word for word, though, but I would say, well, that makes me nervous.
You know, I mean, I mean, that was just...
Yeah, I don't wanna be held to, she wrote this, and then them think what I wrote is law.
Well, I thought, community questions in parentheses, answers to which are available by viewing the videotape of the meeting. So that at least, at least we acknowledge the fact that there were answers.
Should I write out all the questions?
Well, I think just what you have here. I'm okay with what you have.
Yeah, that, that much, you want me to try to, a little bit, no, it's fine, you do a little bit, fine, but for the next minutes, you want me to write all these again, or you want me to pick some of the top ones, and then further?
Well, I don't, I don't think you should have all the questions listed in there.
No, I'm worried. Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I just, I don't think you should...
I think you need to list the owners who spoke, but I don't see a reason to have all the questions, it, it's all on the video, so.
Okay, so just...
But we could say, I think if the topics came up regarding loss evaluation on property, health issues, just keep a general... Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. Should she, she...
I think they're, I've already done, yeah, I don't think anything's...
I was talking more about the filter, so that was my only reason for bringing it up, was just so we're consistent with the approach. Yeah. I would recommend, I'm sorry.
I have a question. I think it was actually being studied, simply being studied, they, they said, well, that means this final, um, um, determination is based upon the building, building by the trees in the town.
Right.
So this is where the second line, where, says, does he see that for questions, does he think, he thinks he's in his stance?
Yep.
That's not what I said, they can't be in your stance. I just said, there's no, that, that means the determination is based on, the building is by the trees, the show is 25 feet.
Could you not send me a note?
The second from our office is, first of all, the negotiation plan is an analysis by both Lita and Art, Artak consultant, was based on both rights at Main Street and 495. And then, the legal review of what it was doing was 547, and then 57123.
It's 547123.
Not building four.
547.
One, two, three, yeah.
We're going to weigh this first, and then we'll tell a second.
Right, yeah. I know, one, seven, one, one.
547123, good capture, yeah.
Yeah. Going, going back to the questions, I would recommend that these just be taken out for a minute, so, you know, to, you guys have a precedent that you don't want to continue them. I would definitely, thank you.
You just said you had some of the topics, you, 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 you...
Almost like what you did for the, yeah, summer, with the top, 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 the topics.
Yeah, because if we, if we approve it, we have these questions in there, and then we go for the next one, which, you know, is gonna...
Yeah, that's this question.
Mm-hmm, right.
Should we approve these in the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the 8th, and the 22nd, we will table advice. We have bills to tie. I passed them around, the folks have an opportunity to view these minutes, basically, we have a couple of... Basically, we have a couple of... A review, um, fees from, of course, we live for both, uh, some private stress of the village center. And for, um, our own internal budget, we have two bills, one for $142.32 and the same contract for $1.703 for the WP Mason. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minute that Bills has submitted?
So move. Second.
Discussion. All who's in favor of approving the Bills, the payment has submitted, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Two minutes, I'll, I'll sign them and then I'll think that.
Okay.
Um, that is all of the business and this isn't on the agenda, but I will take the liberty of discussing it because, um, as the loss as chairman could not anticipate this having come up. And that is the issue of private rents. Uh, Lauren raised the, uh, the issue as to whether we got the authority or not, um, and it would appear that we do not based on council's advice this afternoon. Um, to that end, and given the fact that the warrant for town meeting closes tomorrow, I would like to propose, and I'll do it one of two ways, either as a planning board or I'll do it individually, I'll get ten signatures tomorrow, basically saying language to the same effect, take town vote to amend this town zoning by law section 175 dash seven, ten, by adding the following language. In the case of those, this language limits what we do for parking. And that's the subdivision based on the motions.
So you would basically alternate the zoning by...
Basically, um, the weekend, use our discretion, so.
I want to get it here.
Okay. Uh, it's 175, actually. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Uh, basically, the planning board may make evaluations from the, from the technical requirements they require and they may allow for operations of, uh, driveway width, uh, based upon, I've got to change the language, but long and short of this, I want to get flexibility of changing a requirement. I personally think fifty feet is quite a difference. That notwithstanding, we are what we are, and they aren't with the ZBA, but for a future project that only deals with four or five buildings on a driveway or in some cases street, I don't see that we'd be fifty feet. Um, so... It's one, it's 175 dash seven dash ten is what's gonna have to be changed, but it's gonna mirror this type of language. I apologize for not having this done, but, um, okay. I've highlighted that this afternoon, town meeting order closes tomorrow, um, and I will do, you know, the planning board wants to sponsor this, then it goes on automatically. If it doesn't, then I will call ten signatures tomorrow.
Now, Joe, I guess, you said, this doesn't matter for the owners of the project?
No, they're gonna give us a various clues of you.
So do we, I guess, not that I don't doubt your definition, but is there a need for speed to do it for the next town meeting?
Well, because the next town meeting is, uh, is the next opportunity. In terms of speed, I assume, we heard tonight phase two, there are gonna be some other aspects of this project, if you like, MO, but I don't...
Phase two is not gonna start construction for two years.
I understand that, but my point is, I don't know when this is gonna come up, possibly come up again. I just, I, as I mentioned, Paul, I'm not religious, but the only, the only guidelines or guidance or laws that I know that are carved in stone with the commandments, beyond that, none of these things are carved in stone. Who came up with fifty feet for this type of a project? I don't know, but I, I find it totally, totally overkill. Uh, and to the, to the extent that it makes for an empty project, but never was. Um, I'm bringing it up only because, again, this is the last opportunity for the planning board to sponsor it. And not, again, if you folks don't want to, that's, that's fine. I apologize.
Joe, I would suggest, um, it's clear, they have to identify waivers and other variances that they're seeking, and my suggestion would be, if you look at this project, there are other things that they're asking for that constitute a senior variance, and I agree that more realistically, as to those things that might encompass the things we want to carve out some more sections to. And so my, my suggestion would be, let, let the ZBA handle it, we can get two that's in ZBA as to whether they think it's more, more important, what their issues are, and then we can take a little step back, because they know this, all the variances they're looking for. So every time we come up with something, I know a bunch of the work that shows the limit, maybe the whole bunch of things we need to address, you know, common driveway, there's a whole, these things that I, I didn't know what the variances that we're looking for. I would suggest that we try to believe the word and then just, uh, the left width, is what I'm saying, indication of what we're looking for. And working through this project, as long as you want to affect them right now, let's see what turns out, and then you come back and say, okay, these are the things that we think we're doing, we, we, this is more flexibility. And then, and then reverse it. For a quick point.
I, I hear your point. I think, to speak to me, it is, it's so obvious on his face, I, I don't, who came up with fifty feet? And the one, the roadway through the town industrial project services, uh, hundred buildings, hundred? That may be fifty feet, and that, that is probably necessary because it also services cross-country traffic. Internally, this does not service cross-country traffic. And dealing with at best five buildings, um, I just find it, and again, it's not, I'm not carrying water for conduct because this has no bearing on what may or may not be done by conduct.
And how do we come up with this? Because in combining with the legal, this is really what came up. They're looking at depending on truth, I, I've been listening at surveys, the turning radius, and, and they should be, you know, one, two, for seventeen foot track, it should be a similar highway, a roadway, that's just same lane, same lane, not much traffic, they call for twenty feet.
But there is twenty feet in terms of the radius.
Each road, each road, just twenty feet for...
It's on the inside.
Well, personally, I, personally, so for me, fifty feet, no matter where, I think that's a danger. I think there's a safety issue to that personally, because I think it's gonna give off the feeling that there's more width than there is. It could, I would totally add what people are gonna assume is a second lane or a turning lane or something like that that's not marked. So, I mean, I happen to agree with you, I think fifty feet is usually forward now in, in any potential situation. For me, I think it's, it could be potentially dangerous because it's gonna give enough width so people's gonna think it's potentially two lanes, when it's not, if we're saving extra space for trucks, and the marking of that is, I think, extremely difficult. And that's just from me, from my transportation background.
Speedy. We just know wider roads promotes...
Faster.
Faster driving.
And then... I, I guess, in procedural, I, I hear the point in terms of waiting. Uh, I guess it just, it's such a, sticks in my craw so much, but again, speaking solely personally, I'd like to put forward it, and the planning board doesn't, um, you know, I'll think about whether I can just do it on my own.
So, Joe, to expect, is he in motion to sponsor?
Well, again, I'm not looking to force feed anyone. Um, something we get on town meeting order in one of two ways. I'm gonna charter, planning board submit something, it goes. Um, or under the law, ten signatures with registered voters, I get that just from my kids across the country.
If the motion fails, I'll have to make a motion, sponsor it back, and put this on the next meeting.
Make the second one.
Discussion?
Further discussion.
None.
All in favor of this? I'm sorry?
I mean, yeah, I think, I don't see the need to rush it, I guess.
I, I hear, I hear the point and, and I, I respect it, I just, um...
Yeah.
I'm spoiled right now. I have to have my way if I'm gonna have the right of way.
Well, I wouldn't be making that.
Especially about great ways. Motion in second.
There's been a motion in second, uh, further discussion. Hearing them all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Well, let's do it, we'll, we'll just, uh, because I don't think it's gonna be unanimous. Julie?
Aye.
Or?
No.
Aye. No?
Aye.
No?
Yes. So that's...
Four, four, three.
And this is a special permit, so it passes. I will, uh, you know, clean up the language together a few first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
Um, so that it's...
It's about four P.M.
No, I'll have it too, but I would have done it, but personally, I would have been a little bit...
I would, you know, in talking with Amy, she pointed out that Amy, you know, there's variance to a waiver to a conventional standard for the ZBA unless it's specified, just like what Joe pointed out with parking, is that just, maybe thinking that it seems inefficient? I mean, I realize that this is the rule we have and we need to follow the law, but down the road, we should maybe be looking to see where we have had other situations where a special permit or site plan's gone in and there was a waiver to it. I mean, if it's the planning board that issues it, it's still a public meeting, it's still appealable, the public doesn't lose anything by having it go through planning board, so...
And, and all due respect to the ZBA, they're hearing it out of context. They're not reviewing the whole application, um, as we are. Um, although typically the ZBA deals with dimensional requirements, I, I need fifty foot setback and I only have forty nine. But anyway, we're, we're there, and if there are others...
But I'm just, while you're talking, my understanding of the special permit process is it's not, it's trivial, it's not right. You start off with complying with the bylaws, and then you can look around the bylaws as to what you can apply, which you can apply to. So if you're gonna alter what's in the bylaws, then by nature of the definition of what the special permit is, it really becomes a variance. Our, 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 our monitor is not to change the bylaws and bring things on the other that it's called for, which is parking. If it under varies that parking, it may be destroyed with, then I can see it, but I don't want to open up the door and give you court pressure to stop moving the bylaws because they didn't come back to you, they're gonna hold you to those standards, and you're gonna be hard pressed for the same rate of lack of people.
But, and, and I did realize that Paul pointed out that we approved the Spears project, uh, which is an industrial project, uh, with a smaller driveway.
Same developer.
Same developer. My point is simply that I can't predict, unless we're going to say, uh, you know, ten thousand, a hundred thousand square feet requires a, a twenty eight foot driveway, two hundred thousand, I think we have to react to what we, we see. And I, I hear the point, I just...
Joe, I mean, that's a relationship with that, that's on several, I have no problem with that. I mean, that's, that's really the internal use, but my, my sense is when it's impacting other, other units and other types of facilities, like the retail use, that's a different bargain, I mean, that's, if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't even raise it.
And I agree, I just, again, that's, how much? No. Let it go. Right, it's twenty, it's moved to the twenty, and I, yeah.
Two, three.
No, no.
There's two new things on the agenda. We already noticed that meetings were showing six. I now have to notice over two hundred people.
At least this one's...
Eighteen copies.
We could do two...
Well, you...
Stop.
You know that these are all...
Just mechanically, you folks could go ahead, because they're new, you folks could go ahead and meet on the twenty sixth and deal with those two items.
Or just continue it soon for Thursday.
But you'd have to physically show up to meet.
You have to open the meeting.
Right.
Motion to...
Yeah, we don't all have to show up today. But I can, I mean, I, I work...
I hate for you to down here to say goodbye, unless you can unify them somewhere.
I, I still think two, I believe, um, I believe burning fills is a hundred... It's your whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's a hundred, it's about another hundred and sixty something, and then, uh, the Plain Street one is less, that's, I think, I was like twenty, so, but we're talking like two hundred-ish in total.
Well, let me ask you first. You want to meet twice? Obviously, it's easy for me to say I can't make the first one, but I can certainly make up, uh, haven't missed that.
These ones are easier to say because they don't have to be certified to come out, like this changing, the meeting, I don't have to set it certain prices.
Well, the notices have gone out, so it may just be a change of...
I have to study it again.
A change of date.
I sent out all those of others for this one tonight.
Good question. Where, where did you say we're gonna meet?
Yeah. We said we were gonna meet the twenty sixth at...
That's a, absolutely, we're not gonna be able to meet at town hall for the next meeting because we're gonna have a...
But when we change, I think if you change place, they, they send. And I sent out all...
You know, one of these to be funny with, because we have a lot, I mean...
We already got it. Yeah, for hours.
Yeah, we added, or nothing, we were talking about one.
I don't even know what burning fills is about.
Me neither. The next, there's two.
I don't wanna know until next Sunday.
We've told a lot of them. The mother's solar facility.
The better solar, but... It's right next to, right, right next to...
Well, I'm ready to... Well, it's up to you. Uh, if you wanna meet twice, uh, the twenty sixth and twenty eighth.
Yeah, I don't know if I can do both. Would the public be confused if they see one meeting on the twenty sixth and then another?
Well, we've told, yeah, we just told them ten, they're all...
They're not coming on the twenty eighth.
Our petition's moving to the twenty eighth, and then...
We can't, we gotta go to Tuesday, because the twenty eighth is gonna be crazy.
You know, when, when we're in that next capacity, all these things that we're, we're asking all these people to come in, we might not get to them too. I mean, there's a lot, or the disaster.
We have a timing problem with how quickly we have to call for hearing after the supplemental.
Yeah.
Paul, there's a timing issue, how quickly it's called for meeting after you get this...
We do, and in fact, we, we, it was a borderline call, but the two applications could have been, could have barely made it for tonight, but I was like, no.
By this point, I'm sorry, how, there, in some, some types of public hearings, you have to advertise a hearing within a certain period of time upon submittal of the application.
Right.
So I don't know if that applies here.
It's fourteen days before the hearing.
Well, that's, that's...
And I think it's sixty five.
That's the most...
I think it's sixty five upon supplemental. If we, if you look at the chart, that master sheet we have, it says sixty five days per public hearing, I think. I think we're, I, I think we are gonna run into how, how much can be covered tonight, especially if we're talking about a number of large topics all in...
I mean, people filibuster, extend the tale. Well, that's a question I have. Does the board have to immediately put a title of it on public speakers?
We should do, and unless we're gonna go to time.
We might have to, if we, if we wanna get through everything, we can't, we can't have four hour meetings there. I work, seeing Austin, it was a, it was a typically three minutes per speaker, but if you had a large crowd like tonight, the, the chair, and this is Austin, not here, but they could actually have pop, or grouping, like several people, you know, a number of people could speak three minutes, two minutes, one minute.
Although it was good that you mentioned tonight that you hadn't spoken already and you'd like to, we have had a couple of reviews.
Yeah, we've had, you know, some folks already.
So it'd be nice to hear from the new crowd, but, but I think, uh, you know, which we could be burning fills, both of the Blue Star, the Solar, whatever, new Solar's coming online. Yeah, I mean, like, it's, it's gonna get tough. I think people get upset if they don't, we don't get to their agenda, I haven't spent enough time on it to discuss everything everybody wants to hear.
Well, if the chair can put a limit on, uh, a timeline, then everybody will get a chance to speak, hopefully, and we wanna hear everybody. And I also, I mean, just... I mean, it's complicated, a lot of people, it's my entire night.
I mean, this topic alone means an entire night, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, but if it's more, I mean, it needs to be more organized, if we can get... An entire two minutes, whatever, for each person. But also, I know this is kinda last minute, but the gentleman right in the face of the, you know, the applicant was, that was a little too much.
That was a...
That was, and I broke it, so I don't know if that's the right next time to...
Yeah, yeah, I know. When I said, if I would have had something, yeah, I mean, that can't be, we can't have that.
I think we need to... What's the time in terms of...
Yeah. Late.
When do you wanna meet next? In terms of these, this new solar farm and this Burien Hills. Again, do you want to meet on the twenty-sixth?
Is it all about the issues within the solar farm and the solar farm?
Other than my sense is the driving forces.
This one is not on a regular law?
No.
So we're talking about, it's a lower facility, not ten feet in the air?
Right, it's a five-acre facility.
It's got momentum.
Yeah. I agree. I agree with that.
You know, many, or much fewer residential areas around it, but North Elementary School is there, so... I don't know what, I too many of the innovations in the top four, and they're both gonna be four-hour meetings. This is...
You have to handle the first one. That would be up to you. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're all about two... Alright, so...
I'd really appreciate it from a, open it, continue it till after we notice, but...
I don't mind we notice again. That's not the worst thing, I just wanna know it.
Yeah, we will.
Alright, so we let them know the twenty-eighth, I would just stick to the twenty-eighth.
I know, I think we're gonna have to do that.
The other one, can we start? I don't think that's gonna get us that many earlier.
No, just means that we're two in these six.
Do you say that an hour for each topic?
Yeah, I mean, because my sense is we're not gonna ramp up any of these things out at our next meeting. So, I might even touch on each one, on each one's own, and stick to an agenda that is, seven-thirty to eight-thirty for something, eight-thirty to nine-thirty for something else. And just, you know, if people care a little, then we're gonna end it. So if we're going to do, handle all of these on the twenty-eighth, we're obviously gonna have to be a bit more economical in terms of time.
I don't see how we can add two more topics onto these ones that are already on the twenty-eighth.
I have another question, since I have another hundred, almost two hundred of others.
Two hundred on the Burien Hills?
Yeah.
Because it's awful. It's all Frank Mill millage.
Even today, they were in the other room, and we wanted...
So I know, I wanna know this.
I had a sense that there were quite a few people out there, you know? If the middle school has a bigger space...
Yeah, I turned this up for August, twenty-seven.
You would be getting a hundred fifty people, trust me.
We have to bring everybody in.
But if it's, if it's a wait for sitting, if you have fifty people, if you have the ability to comfortably sit fifty people, then you'll check on the middle school.
The following, the following Tuesday, the fifth, that would require me to re-notice, but...
Well, we'd have to re-notice.
I'll just tell you something, as long as this legally is here, I can arrange to get it blasted out to the community to confirm what's going on. So I just don't know how you have to do it, but I think that's not official notice. But I can, if there's something that you're proposing, you're gonna continue this meeting, you're leaving there, but you're gonna continue it, and you said you have a notice for continuing the meeting, you know, I can, I can enforce that, but we have to, we just need to blast out that notice.
We have to, we should, I can. But I think...
But it doesn't affect other people on the other side of the street that we have to get notice to.
Right, so the question is, can we move into the following week? I don't see why not, it's later. If we could just get another notice out to people.
And just to stagger these.
And this is just for the new ones.
Right, so we're... We would essentially have three meetings consecutive weeks. I'm gonna be out of the country from the fifteenth to the twenty-fourth, so, February. So, from Friday.
So are you...
Is there gonna be meetings at twenty-sixth and the...
Well, that's...
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have this.
I'm sorry, twenty-sixth.
Move Burien Hills, since we're gonna re-notice anyway, move them to the fifth.
Yeah.
We just gotta let them know and make sure that's...
Okay, so we're gonna meet the twenty-fifth.
This is a robbery schedule.
They already have the twelve schedule.
Yes, we do. Yeah, they have the twelve.
We will add...
So writing one meeting.
So this is February, the twenty-eighth and then...
This is January eighth, March, March twelve.
The only deal with Burien Hills and the LG, nothing, nothing.
So we're gonna re-notice.
Okay.
I move adjourned?
Actually, it's a new business, new business.
Okay.
Alright, so actually, good news in a way. So my wife and I had a bet, if my voice, first words were mama, I would run for reelection. If it was dada, I would not run for reelection. Here's the video. Still time for about a minute. So you're not... Yeah, so that said, I enjoy reading at night, and it's only the stage once, but I've decided not to return the papers.
That's unfortunate.
But no, it's been a great three years, and I, before those, I was on the Admiral City School for four years, and it was very political, where depending on what party you joined, if you had a great idea, if you didn't have the votes, you couldn't bring something to the table. This hasn't been the case for this planning board. We always think about what's best for the community, and we all, always, the last three years of my time here, we've always worked together, so I greatly appreciate that. It's been a great experience.
Well, definitely. I think we're completely opposites politically, but everything we pretty much agree on here, so...
Yeah, we shock each other sometimes, we look at you, go, yeah, I love that.
No doubt, Admiral's proposed term limits on certain things. And that would be a good, instead of term limits, just have that little test. That's awesome.
That was the best, best house in my life, and I was like, wow, so... Good question.
On the first one, yeah, that's okay. I think there was a motion to adjourn. I think everybody said, yeah, alright.